Good evening, this is the Rutland Town Planning Commission and this is October twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. Welcome everyone. Let's start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we take a look at the agenda, we've got. We've got four, five, six. So six members here, so everyone's voting. Obviously.
Someone online or no?
No.
Is that you twice, Bill?
Yeah, one's that laptop.
Oh, yeah, mate. Got it.
Okay, so Norm Cohen is here, Howard Burgess, Dana Peterson, myself, Sherman Hunter, and Mary Beth Polley are in attendance. So first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Are you unanimous? Public comment? No public? Are in attendance this evening? So let's move down to new business and re-adopting the rules of procedure. I think you all have a copy of of what we currently have. And so we need to re-sign this every year. And this is our opportunity to make any changes before we sign up for another year with these rules of procedure. So open the board, any, oops, any discussion? Norm?
Yeah, I would not move to adopt it tonight. I went over it. Not very long, but I I found some things I wanted to talk about. And maybe I'll just maybe Dana and I'll get our heads together and then go to Bill with our consolidated version. Is that right with you, Dana?
That's fine with me. I thought that we should, I I thought that we should highlight for Bill or for the members, any areas that we've flagged.
Well, that's what I thought you and I would, since we tend to pick up much of the same, then take that to Bill and let him highlight it for the next meeting.
I I'm I'm okay with that, Norman, but I'm uncomfortable without sharing with the rest of the group or giving the rest of the group an opportunity to.
Oh, no, they would, it would just be the first round of discussion.
Yeah.
Rather than being redundant and going over each other.
Yeah, I think that's, I think it's perfectly fine. It, in a nutshell, are are they just, are they like typo type things or?
The ones that I had, well, go ahead, Norman, and I'll speak.
One or, one or two are substantive, mainly defining where it says will, should it mean shall, should we use the word shall, that kind of thing? If it's to be required, then I think that's, and I think that's what the purpose was in several spaces.
I have a couple of things.
It's nothing substantive. A great substance.
Great substance.
I I have some substantive things that I would like to share, if you don't mind, Madam Chair. And then we can go off and and do whatever based on the pleasure of the planning commission. Um, so for me, in paragraph two, it references the chair, but paragraph one references a a design, well, references vice chair or other designated member. In paragraph seven on page three, it talks about other presiding member, implying that that person has the power of the chair, which is true. I I think that there needs to be, I would just highlight, or you can circle, number two, C two, and F seven for cohesiveness, and I'll work on that with Norman. Um, on C three, it talks about a majority of members, but it gets confusing between whether those members are alternate members or regular members, and I think that we need to clarify that. So my suggestion would be to include the word regular members where we're talking about members for a core.
Okay.
Um, there are a couple of other things that that appears in a couple of other places, but I won't bore people with the with going over those, and that's all I have in terms of things that we would need to discuss.
Why does, keep hitting the mic here tonight. Oh, sorry. Could you in your discussions look at D on page two, D two? Just clean up where we're supposed to post in public places, the agendas. The third line there is kind of funky.
You mean number three?
Uh, number two and under.
Oh, third line, number two, okay.
Yeah.
Two public bulletin boards inside town hall?
Yeah, I think we have two public bulletin. Okay, so we just need to, there's some typos, there's a typo there.
Okay, I didn't catch the typo, but.
And then the public bulletin board outside of town hall? Where would that be? The transfer station?
Oh, it's front door, outside. It's three, they're, they're, they're considered three separate postings. So at the front door.
Okay.
So when you say outside of town hall, it means literally.
Outside.
Outside of the.
Maybe the front door might be.
We could clarify that, yeah, on the outside of town hall. Anyway.
And there was one other thing, F one on page three. All meetings of the body are meetings in the public, not of the public. I just, it, the tone of that just doesn't seem right.
You have a, um, do you have a suggestion about what that might look like?
Are open to.
I was just gonna say, do we need not of the public?
We could just go to the second sentence there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Where are you again, F one?
Yeah.
You saying delete the first sentence?
Yeah, maybe.
No.
Okay, I'll, I'll mark that as a, we'll take it up.
Do you mean delete the first sentence?
Well, um, we could.
I thought that's what Sherman was saying and.
No, I don't think so.
No, I don't think that's.
I was saying just delete not of the, the phrase, not of the public.
Okay. All, all meetings of the body are, are open to the public?
Yes.
And members of the public shall be.
Shall be welcomed.
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I mean, if it's open to the public, I don't know that you need to say that they're welcomed. I think you need to set the, what the boundaries are for participation.
Yeah.
And I think that that does it in line too.
I will, we'll play with it, get back to it.
Yeah. We'll leave it to you.
You guys can.
Your expertise.
Sure, I'll, I'll do get out with.
When the two of you are.
Yeah. He may win, but that's okay.
Okay, so.
I'll defer to my, my senior colleague.
My mentee.
So.
Yes, there you go.
At our next meeting on the seventeenth of November, we can take this up again.
Right, and discuss the points that we've highlighted. So what we'll do is, we'll get to Bill. If that's okay with you, Bill, any highlighted suggestions, and then we can just focus on that. If somebody comes up with something in the meantime, just please send that to Bill. And then he can either clue us in, Norman and I, or Norman and me, or just add it to the discussion. It shouldn't take very long. I think the document was well crafted last year, so.
Okay. All business. Let's get back into the subdivision ordinance and let's spend, let's, let's keep this conversation going through about seven tonight, and then we'll pick it up again. I think there's been a consensus that we'll do this in segments and.
That's what we had discussed. There were only four of us. We only had a small representation last time. You were here, Howard, right? Or were you? Yeah.
Yes.
Did that sound reasonable to just take it in small chunks, do fifteen, twenty minutes each time and then make our way through it, because it was a little bit dense and some of them are going to require substantive conversation? That sounds good to you?
Yep.
Okay.
So take it away, Dana.
Oh, me, oh, my. Um, so, um, just to start off, I I think that there are three areas that will need substantive discussion. Pages sixteen, seventeen, and twenty-two. Bill, if I've missed anything in terms of the substance, please chime in, but those were three that I think that we'll need to take some time to look at. We went through a variety of sections the last time. Including page six, which needs to cross-reference schools. There's a contract reference on page six, which we don't think we do. And there's an implication and how, when we discuss that in terms of its implication for the school section four point one-one. Uh, but Bill made some changes, is that correct, Bill?
I made all the changes we talked about at the last.
Last meeting, okay.
Yeah, let's run that by the town attorney when we get all of the changes put together. Maybe there's some reasoning for it to be in there.
For what to be where?
The, the school connection that you just brought up.
Um, well, just to bring you up to speed, Barbara, and I don't want to take too much time so we can actually get to the task, but when we discussed it at the last meeting, there was a sense that the provision was added sometime shortly after the establishment of the the town school, is that, is that correct? And that there might have been implications for development that would have an impact on the school necessitating the the Rutland Town current school on Post Road, when that one was set up. And so there was an implication that if we had a lot of development, there might be a need to, to have a developer create a second school located within the town. Did I accurately characterize that?
That's, yes, that's, that's good.
Okay. So that, that's, that's section four point one-one may need some clarification. If we still believe that development is going to be that substantial, then we might want to leave the provision in there. If we think that the capacity of the Rutland Town School could take X number of of developments and students from those developments, then we might not want, we might not want to have a provision that was proposed forty years ago remain in the ordinance, but I, I think that that would be for future discussion. I'm not prepared to, you know, open that up quite tonight, but Madam Chair, you're uh, it's your pleasure on that.
Quick comment, just that Act two fifty, if a project has Act two fifty jurisdiction, then that's one piece of the permitting process is the school questionnaire that looks at whether the development would impact the school.
Mm-hmm.
So it would be tied into that.
That's another change.
Two fifty proceeding.
Subdivision, just regulation. Right? Well, I mean, I don't know when this originally was, was drafted.
Eighty-one with revisions in ninety-nine.
So the school opened like in sixty-nine, Act two fifty started in like sixty-eight, sixty-nine. So I'm not sure why.
So we're saying that this active, this is redundant with what happens at Act two fifty.
Yeah.
Is it redundant?
That's what I interpreted from.
At least for subdivisions of a certain size that would trigger Act two fifty.
Well, yeah, a subdivision probably would, but then I think that was something, I don't think, Bill, you were aware of that? When we were discussing the, the Act two fifty implications in terms of.
Makes sense that that'd be that big of a project, yeah, I mean, and this, this didn't say like a hundred lots of division.
Yes.
Yes.
So.
Act two fifty is ten.
Yeah, it's like, so.
There should be a cross-reference then to Act two fifty uh, regulations in here, then, Mary Beth.
But that's what we're saying is like, there's other regulations that supersede the authority of this, so why waste the, the, the time to put something in that's not going to have any relevance, so, you know, it just makes it, you know, when someone's looking at it, it makes the document a lot easier to manage when you are removing things that are already taken care of.
And just place the reference in there, and the only thing that I would recommend is that anything that's not covered in Act two fifty that we believe needs to be part of the subdivision ordinance would then be included. Okay. So, um, reference Act two fifty then. Okay, thanks for bringing that up, Mary Beth.
This is section four point one-one?
Four point one-one, yep. Uh, so, um, in the interest of time, we've got about ten minutes, I would suggest that we go to page sixteen. And have a discussion on the two topics that are located under planning standards, four point oh-one. And that is character of the land, and the first one is owner certification. Uh, that's highlighted in red. So Norman, I think that this was yours in terms of owner certification, in terms of a a question that you had. Did you want to chime in, and do you want me to just move forward and have us have a discussion on this paragraph?
I don't remember, I don't remember raising it, but if I did, I've got to now figure out what I had to say.
That, that's quite all right. Uh, let's take a read through the paragraph and then we'll address the owner certification.
Why isn't that, yeah, why isn't it good the way it is?
I, I think, and I don't want to speak for anybody else, but I think what was raised was that there needed to be a sign-off or a certification that they have been in compliance with these provisions. So making sure that they're addressing adequate capability, including streets utilities, and avoiding hazardous conditions that would preclude the subdivision from occurring. So now it's coming back to me. I think that that was the question raised about the certification.
Owner saying that they will comply with that or something along those lines, yeah, but it was, it was Norm's topic that he implied that, so.
Yep. So, yeah, Mary Beth.
Um, I don't think it's redundant. I think it's good to have in there, but it's consistent with when applying for wastewater permit, you would go through those items through the state permitting process. So I think it's just reinforcing what everyone would already be doing through wastewater permitting.
So by, yeah, by getting the permits, they're answering most of these.
But still valuable to have it in.
So when you say valuable to have it in, what specifically do you mean? Are you talking about the owner certification and how would you want to phrase that? If that's in case, if that's in fact the case.
I mean, well, by owner certification, do you mean having an item on the subdivision form application that they're filling out?
I, I don't think we got that far in our discussion last time. So we were just flagging areas for discussion. So the answer to that could be yes, it depends on what this body wants to um, implement. And perhaps we ask Bill his perspective on that.
I think that's something that we can probably add to the, like, the checklist, and there's the, there's the application form, and that, that can be a part of the application, is that owner provides certification for standards identified in four point oh-one point one.
Yep.
And would it, would it, would it be of value if we just added a, a note saying as referencing the wastewater permit? Is that what it is?
Right.
So the other, the other part of that.
It's the same thing.
All this makes sense is that, so what happens if they don't?
If they don't agree or if they just.
If, if they say, yeah, we do this, they give us this letter and then they don't, what happens?
Are they not then in compliance with the wastewater permit?
Waste. That wouldn't, but that wouldn't be anything the, the, the subdivision ordinance is going to enforce, that'd be A and R enforcing it, so. Like we talked about with some of the other ordinances, like, when it, when it comes to like follow up on these things, if somebody's going to violate it, what's, what's? Are we going to send them a fine? Probably not, because it's not going to change anything, so. It's, it's a matter of like, what, what is it going to do for us? So I'm all favor having in there, it's fine to have it in there, but what, what is it going, what are we accomplishing having it there, other than like, it sounds good, and I, I totally get it, and it's like, great, we're, we're happy to follow these standards, and they decide that they don't, what are we going to do?
So aren't all of these things covered by the permit? Don't, aren't these all check-offs when they come with the subdivision proposal? I mean, they can't be in a special flood hazard area.
The, the, the informational building permit would cover the flood hazard area, so that's, that's handled by that permit by, by, it's, by, in the way it exists right now, it handles floods hazard regulations. So we've got that part covered.
Yeah.
And that's, that's almost the, the major part of this is just making sure that, we've already, we've already got the regulations that cover that, so.
Right.
Because didn't those come in after this was put in place?
Uh, I forget, I think it was eighty-seven the last time, and it was read adopted in two thousand nine, eight.
This ordinance is nineteen eighty, so this was put in place when they didn't exist. But now they do, I think, I think those have superseded.
Right.
This, so is it something that can just leave? And if, if this section didn't exist, how would it impact our approval process?
I'm not sure it would.
I don't think it would. I, 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 I don't, I don't think it would, I mean, that, you know, I, I'm, I'm taking a different approach to looking at some of these things, it's like, yeah, this is great, but if somebody doesn't do it, it's going to fall back on me, and like, and what really are we going to do? Like, we're really not going to do anything, like, it really, there's really not. If someone has, does something that violates the, the that, so they sign, they've certified, they're going to follow the character of the land, and they don't. We send them an eight hundred dollar fine and they write us a check and we're done, like, the end result is no different than, than that, so, you know, it's just, it's just what, it, it, I think some of these things are already accomplished by other regulations that have come into play since this was done.
And, and permits, the, the, what might not be here, and I'm not sure it's important enough to have a whole section on it, is the reference to the town plan. And like.
That's actually the next section. We talked about that, that's why energy conservation is highlighted, because isn't that part of the town, the, the, part of the town plan?
It is, but it's not, in, in the character of the land, we're talking about soils and slopes and ag lands. So it's a little bit different than energy conservation. So, yeah, um.
Right, I think considering what we've learned about what we actually have the authority to do in the absence of zoning. Right, that makes sense, like, do we actually have the authority to enforce something like that?
Well.
You mean through the town plan?
Right.
The town plan includes the view sheds, and that's actually basically addressed in number five.
Town plans are somewhat sacrosanct in state government, and, you know, in, in the courts. If the, you know, if you've got it stated in town plan, this is what you want, it does carry some, I don't know, sacrosanct is the right word, but it carries some weight.
So, what, I mean, I think the last meeting, we, we, sorry, the green was a little aggressive, I'll lighten that. But we, maybe I'll agree the lot layout was one that was just not something that we have, we can do anything with. So, but maybe the planning standards, since we're saying like, well, this parts of the town plan, this parts of town plan, say that you're, you know, some language that references the standards in the town plan, rather than duplicating the language, if it's here, and then we change the, we, we update the town plan, and this is automatically updated without having to actually do anything.
That's right.
Hmm, yeah. Yep.
And any other permits that we know are in existence.
Right.
Because that way, if we're going to be updating those, when those get updated, then it automatically carries over to the planning.
Yeah, and, and, and I would indicate.
Think the whole section goes and it just references the standards identified in the town plan.
And the state, and, I mean, some of, some of these are local permits too.
Right.
You know, for the, the roads and such. Mary Beth?
And I can give an example for wetlands, so the wetland rules statewide were updated in two thousand and ten and changed significantly, so before two thousand and ten, a wetland basically had to be on the state mapping to, you know, be covered under state law, but after two thousand and ten, um, it's the landowners' responsibility to find a wetland if there, if it is there, and only about twenty percent of wetlands are mapped. So that's just an example of those rules changed significantly, so if we just reference.
So are you saying, Mary Beth, that the wetlands definition is broader than what is mapped by the state, and therefore it's the owner's responsibility to make sure that it doesn't fall beyond those twenty percent that are actually mapped?
Right.
Right, but the, the mapping is changing too, I mean, there, there, the mapping, the twenty percent is not a static figure.
Exactly, right, and so, an example of one regulation that is significantly changes over five, ten, fifteen years, so we just want to be careful, like with the town plan, that we're referencing that and not.
So something like, it, you know, that it must conform to applicable town planning standards, state planning standards, you know, to reference the, the standards and the statutes rather than specific language that like, if it stays statute changes, we can't do anything about that, we can't be less restrictive of the state, so.
That's, that's really a good rule for us to follow, period.
Throughout this.
Well, and whatever we're doing.
Whatever we're doing.
If, if it's already written, we should just reference it.
Right.
We've got examples of that in here, so.
And give ourselves flexibility.
Yeah.
For future changes.
So perhaps, uh, being mindful of our time, Mary Beth, you can look at these sections and make a recommendation about the cross-referencing for other ordinances. And then that way, we can include those and perhaps consolidate and make more succinct this particular section on the planning.
But those are going to change too, Dana. So, you, you know, not glacially, but, but they, they can. So it's one, I'm wondering if that's not flexible enough for this, that we just say state permitting and local regulations or and that sort of thing.
Well, I, I find, I find a document that does not have a specific reference to be very ambiguous and unhelpful. And so what I would say is, uh, including but not limited to X, Y, and Z, that way you have an example of what is out there, and if we adopt another ordinance that is not included there, all they have to do is come in, ask Bill if there's another ordinance that would govern, and he can give them that. And then we can include that in an annual update or something like that, but when, when we make things so vague, then it's not helpful.
No, it's not.
And then you just generate more questions. So if we know that there are things that would govern, I would say use the language, including but not limited to. And then that way, we can take these, we've already, we're looking at taking out paragraph four and reducing probably those other um, you know, four paragraphs to a title and a, and a reference to, you know, either other local ordinances or the you know, state statutes or regulatory provisions, but.
Four has something to do with lot layout?
Yeah, four had to do with lot layout. It says, the layout of lots conforms to the requirements of zoning, and we don't have zoning regulations where enforced and shall be appropriate to the intended construction. Corner lot shall have extra width to permit a setback on each street. Consideration in lot layout shall be given to topographic and soil conditions, but those are all governed elsewhere, is that correct?
Yeah. Well, like, this was, like, when, when we talked about it, it was just once we got, once the zoning part of it kind of came out of that paragraph, the rest of it just fell apart, so.
Right.
There was nothing, the, the only thing was like the consideration for the corners to be, you know, of view, like, there's nothing, we, it's not, we can't do that, so. Without zoning, we can't do it, so that's why the, the whole thing just came out.
Oh, right, okay.
Yeah.
Yep, thanks. And the energy conservation, which is the second. Uh, highlighted, red, red highlighted, uh, item. Uh, is, uh, covered in the energy plan section of the town plan, and so one of the questions that. That raised was whether that was unnecessary and could be removed.
You know, I'm. Yeah. You might not think of, like, we better go check with the energy, you know, energy section of the town plan and see if it's duplicated. Norm?
Um. I would not count on people. Going to the energy section of the town plan, I don't know any time. That I've done that when I was practicing law. Um, we went to the town plan, you went to the regulations. That are. As I understand it, uh, adopted to. Trying to think of the word, to, um. Catalog the town plan, uh, and that's what this does.
Well, for example, cluster development is referenced in the town plan. It's the last line that's in there.
It's, it's referenced in the, the, yeah, the main body of the town plan.
So, uh, to, to, you know, Bill's point, or whoever else made the, the comment, you can reference the sections. That would say exactly what we want people to be aware of. But to put it here, when the town plan is likely to be, uh, revised. Uh, more readily than the ordinance.
Yep.
Then you wouldn't want to put something in here that would give a conflicting. A perspective on what the town plans.
So, the other part of that too is, like, Norm, like you're saying, you don't, you don't, you've never gone to the town plan, which is, which is fine, but this isn't, this isn't. For construction. This is for a subdivision request.
That's what I'm saying.
And, so, we are giving them the standards to which they meet. And then they come to us, and we tell them, yes, you have, or no, you haven't, it's up to them to go back. And do the research to change it if they need to, and it's up to us to say, do you meet our standards, yes or no, it's up or down, and if it's no, then. We say, no, you haven't met the requirements, and send.
Go do it, right.
We don't, it's not up, this isn't for, we're not doing like, plan review. That, you know, we have to do that, it's, that's up to the applicant to, to say they do or not, and.
Thank you, misunderstood.
Okay.
The subdivision regulations. As I understand it, obviously applied to the division of land. And the division of land is. For the most part. Uh, there's several components to it, one is sewer water. Major component. Another is environmental impact, and another is energy. So we have to have something in these regulations that articulates those. Critical facets of land development. And whether it's by reference. Or whether we articulated with some verbiage here. Um, I don't think we can default regularly to the plan without some indication.
Sure, no, I, 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 no, and I agree, but, but like you say, when they, when talks, if it's, if it's municipal sewer. They have to go through us anyway. That, that's a separate process, it's already defined. If it's individual sewer, they need to go through the state wastewater, which still isn't us anyway. So, which, which, which isn't, which isn't this body, so. Handling the sewer, that's what, that's, and that's another whole section here, which we talked about. Does that, does that section change drastically, because there's already two processes which define that, so. Does, you know? That, does, does duplicate, and I think, I think this was more a discussion on. Duplicative language, or redu- redundant, or, or conflicting language.
Right.
Rather, rather than saying, you know, copy and pasting things, and there's another one, we talked about which road standards, which. Goes through this entire section, and the last thing says, in all cases, the town's ordinance is, it takes effect, so. It negates everything that comes before it.
And that was prior to the development of the streets and sidewalks, uh, ordinance, so. That needs to be incorporated there, and so all of the other guidelines that are indicated or requirements.
Are obsolete. Yeah, so, I think that was, that was the, the, the genesis of that norm was just to, so. We don't have a document, cuz we've, that has come up a couple of times, where one document says one thing, and one document says the other thing, and it's like. Well, which is right, and it's like, ah, so, if we say, like, these are the standards you must meet, and here is where you find them. Rather than writing them out here, it's like, here, this is a reference document, not the, all, not all the details.
So you're talking about the permanent application form, or something like that?
There's, there's whole sections, there's a whole section in here on water, and a whole section in here on sewer. And on, and on designing town roads. And, and all of those things are, are, are handled by, by an ordinance that's in place, which. Has all but made each of those sections obsolete.
Yeah, pages nineteen and twenty-one, I think, deal with, uh, streets and sidewalks and, uh, sewage and disposal.
Yep.
So tho- those are the ones that, uh, you're referencing, Bill. And, uh, we have to have a discussion about those, but I decided to start on sixteen, because I thought that that was the first one of substance.
Yeah.
So do, do you have any direction, do, do you have any guidance from, from us concerning energy conservation, or?
Uh, well, I think we just started to have that conversation. I, I like the direction which we're heading, if Mary Beth wants to pull some of those things together in terms of giving that, bringing that back to us for the character of land. My. Uh, my suggestion is that with respect to energy conservation, we decide how much of this goes beyond. Or, uh, it covers something that is not already outlined in the town plan, if it doesn't. Already address something not incorporated into the town plan, then we can leave it. But if it does, then we just reference the sections in the town plan. So, I think what would be beneficial. For the body to move this work forward is to understand whether that suggestion. Is the direction in which we want to head. Doing it now with respect to something like energy and the character of the land will help us to set the template. Or the, uh, procedure moving forward for other discussions along these same lines.
Okay.
So, uh, for me, and I'm, I hope I'm speaking for Bill and, and Norman, who, who both contributed significantly to the. The, to the, uh, newer versions, that that would be, that would be a beneficial process, because you want to. You don't wanna be doing something different every time we come up to a discussion. It would be, I think, most succinct and beneficial and cohesive to have, you know, three questions that we're gonna ask ourselves. Is it included someplace else? If yes, then reference it, if no, then let's make sure the language. Uh, i- is there, uh, another governing, uh, entity? That we need to reference besides the local, if yes, then reference that entity. And, uh, are there other, uh, provisions that we want to include in a checklist like Bill has, has referenced? Do we want to include this somewhere in one of our ordinance checklist, or, uh, checklists for subdivisions? However, that comes up, and so those are the real three questions I can think of. That, that we would want to address as a, uh, as a body as a whole.
Okay. All right, one more quick thing on the, um, energy conservation. The first sentence says, shall use the least areas of roadway, sewer, water, utility, but then the other sentences are, should. So buildings should be sited in a certain direction, and landscaping should be used. I think they're general enough that they're more guidelines than standards.
So what are you suggesting, Mary Beth? There is an inconsistency there, and shall seems to imply that you must do it. Whereas should is a, a, a recommendation to at least take it into consideration.
I don't think we have the powers to make it a shall.
Right, and I don't think it's a bad thing that's, I just wanted to point out. Um, I don't think any of these are bad things, I think it's, we just need to be aware that they're not.
Change all to should.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, don't jump.
And maybe, well, oh, yeah, we could talk about character of the land, but maybe some of those should be changed to should. Along those same lines.
But, look, it says in the first, let's just look for purposes of discussion at, at the first sentence of paragraph two. In order to conserve energy, all subdivisions. Shall use the least area of roadway, or should. What do we want? What's the question?
Or what can we do?
Well, I guess so too.
If we ma- if it stays shall, I mean, how do we enforce that? Or how do we say, wait a minute, you can't do that, wh- what do we back it up with?
S- so, I, to your point, Barbara, I think I'm calling a timeout here, because. Uh, if some of this language is gonna disappear, then we don't need to be debating the number of angels that can dance on the head of a pen. And so I would suggest that we not talk about that, but I, in general, if these are guidelines, then we should go with the word should. Anything that's a shall should be referenced by another ordinance or state statute, that would be my recommendation on that particular.
That's good.
That makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
If we can do it consistently.
Yep.
Right.
Which means going through this eleven times, left-handed and semi-blindfolded. And everything else, which, you know, we can have Sherman do.
But we shall go with the word should.
Touche.
I think we shall have Sherman do it.
I'm sure we're gonna get roped into it.
And, and then there's Howard, it hasn't said anything either, you know, so. I'm sorry.
Okay, Dana, um, anything else you wanna bring up tonight?
Uh, no, I think that that's, that's the, uh, direction that we have. Um, perhaps Bill can, when he does the minutes, can throw those three questions that I went. Over into our notes so that we don't lose.
And the three questions again?
The first question was, um, it does this, well, it's on tape, so. In case I get it wrong, go with the first set, because I had that right. Uh, the first question is, uh, is the information referenced someplace else? If yes, then make the reference, if no, then put in the language that we want to flag. Two, uh, is there another, um, uh, governing, uh, statute or ordinance that. Uh, actually addresses this matter, if yes, then let's reference that, and the third one was. Uh, do we want to include the language on a checklist for submission for subdivisions? I think those are the three, but if, if I didn't get those right, Bill, just take them off the first one, because I knew that the first one was. Uh, clearer in my mind.
Okay.
It, it, those are just suggestions, I mean, just because I said it doesn't mean that we all have to do it, but.
Excuse me a second. Phil, I'm having a horrible time. Seeing the black through the red.
Yeah, are you, the red?
Is that red or green?
Uh, it's green.
Probably green, Norm.
Well.
Yeah, no, I, I, I already, I already.
It's number four.
I already addressed that.
He apologized.
He apologized, he said he's gonna find another color.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
It'll be less aggressive green next time.
Okay, it can be a lighter shade, but I, I can't see through this.
You're not the only one.
Now, why you been so quiet?
Okay, thank you, thank you Dana and everyone else.
Yep. So, for, uh, simplicity purposes, um, Bill, I, I don't know, other than changing the shade. For the dark green, that you need to do anything else with, uh, a document, if people want the, the new one with the lighter shade, then they can go ahead.
I'll email that out, so everybody has it.
Okay, with the lighter shade, but, um, in, in terms of this, we still have to come back, so I don't know that there's anything that you need to, to do. Uh.
Really change anything, so.
Yep. Great.
Yeah.
And sorry that I went over, I said that it would only take fifteen or twenty minutes, and it took us thirty-five.
Okay, I think we're all kind of expecting. That at this point, okay, let's move down.
Gotta get my cat wrangler.
History, history.
Next on the.
Thank you, Barbara.
We did, thank you. Next on the agenda, um. Select board action, action. On the permit tracking ordinance. And Bill, I'm gonna send this your way. They.
There was none.
Well, there was none the other night, and I'm, I've sat through, I think, a couple of times that they've tabled this. Can you shed some light on what the delay is? From either, they haven't even really considered it yet.
I will. And I'm, other than other things. Th- this was put on the agenda kind of from, from this group, and there's just been other things that have. Been taking place, and the last meeting was not too bad, the meeting before that, we were here till, till ten forty-five, so. There's been some meetings that have just gone for a very long time, and that's just has not taken a priority, so. Um.
Are they waiting for other, like us, working our ways through the subdivision thing? Does the group have any ideas or any preferences?
They all, they need to read it and talk about the language in it, there's just been. Other things on the agenda, and. Just last thing, there's already three things on the agenda for November seven. So, I, it's there, we did, they didn't do it last time, because Ma- Mary wasn't there last time, she wanted to be part of that discussion, so that was specifically held off. For that, but. Yeah, I don't really know.
Uh, are we still waiting for something from the, um, town attorney on that as well?
We haven't got anything in writing, in this conversation with him, he was not. Really in favor of that additional questionnaire. That was, I think, I think he said it was pretty much exceeded our authority to. To get that detailed.
Mm-hmm.
So. It was back to the actual, it's the, it, it's, it, there, there's, it, that questionnaire, while. Detailed is outside the scope of the ordinance, there's nothing in there that even talks about that kind of thing, so we have, you know, the, the. Going back and changing the ordinance is the only way to change what we're asking for, and anything more than that really is. Outside what we can do without zoning, so.
Yep.
It was more, and, and, and the, it was a permit tracking ordinance. For the purpose of making sure a person doing projects met. Town permit requirements, it was not a building permit ordinance, and that's what it's kind of being shoved towards, and it's not, it's not that.
Okay.
So, they all agree, like, that it, it's, there's some change needed to be made, but they just haven't had change, they just haven't gotten into that, a, a good discussion on it yet, so.
So they'll, once they have had that discussion, they'll get back to us about what we need to.
However. I've heard some members of the select board say that, uh, given a recent situation. Where we didn't know of some development going on in town. Um, that they were able to use the ordinance as is, it worked essentially. And I came away thinking that there might not be a lot of support for even the minor changes we're. Suggesting here. So, I mean, you don't have to answer that, Bill.
Kind of diplomatic. Um. I think there is. Support for the ability to gather the information that we want, but there's not really a way to do it without taking a huge step. Yeah.
So if we took the questionnaire away, this, we're not asking for that much.
Right.
We're asking for some typos to be fixed, and.
I, I think, I think if that came off, that might make it easier, because that, there's just no, there's nothing in that ordinance that a lot, that really. Says we can go after that kind of information. And. You know, we, I, I added the section on the flooding, which actually has helped, we got, we got a couple because of that. Um, but, w- we're still getting them, and we got, we got a couple this week, and, and, you know, well, and, and some people are doing some very detailed. Submissions with them too, so there, it is, it is getting a desired result.
Yeah.
And we will forever and always not know the gap. Like, someone, someone subdivides land, and two people split parcels, and then a year later, someone wants to build a house, and they put the house there. And we don't know about it? We don't know about it.
Right.
So.
So. What do you think, group? I mean, what, do you think we should change our approach, or do we just keep waiting?
What's the objective?
Me to be more forceful at the next select board meeting and, and ask them.
The other, the other part of that is. I, I think, I think the ordinance can be changed and be more useful because it's designed to track permits that are needed. And we actually have a fire alarm ordinance which requires a permit, which. We are not enforcing that ordinance right now. But there's some things in that ordinance that need to be changed. Like it says, you must go to the city of Rotten Fire Department to get a permit. No, you don't. Probably, no, so. But there's a few, the fire department has to, the fire committee has to take a look at it. They just haven't meant to do it yet. So that permit tracking ordinance should be. Used to make sure that somebody that's doing a project doesn't need a municipal sewer connection, a, a municipal water connection, a fire alarm permit. Uh, you, you know, those kind of flood hazard permit, those kind of things that we already have. A driveway installation permit, excavation on the right of way permit, like we have a lot of things already. And that's what it was more for was to make sure that these other things that we require are getting looped in. And it was like in the absence of zoning, this is how we are gonna kind of do this and, and I think, well. A good effort, I think the way we're trying to shape this ordinance is just not what it's gonna work as. I think we, I think, I, I, while I, I'm, I'm not, I'm, I'm not against it, I think it's a great idea. I don't think it's gonna, I don't think it could pass the, the, the authority muster at this point.
So.
Even, even this draft?
No, this, the draft we can, but I think the questionnaire, I think the questionnaire just is, is more than, I, I don't, I think that's, that's a bigger part of the problem.
So do we want to go to the select board and say, drop the questionnaire? That's okay? Or, or what?
That probably would help. But if we go back to the ordinance and say, and even I've tried to do that and, and say, okay, what is it asking for? What do the ordinance actually want? What can we actually get from it? And does our permit? Yet accomplish that? And just fix that. If we, you know, if we can start there. Anything more than that, I think we're, we're into zoning and it's just not gonna, and if we, and if we go that direction. Then a whole bunch of other stuff is gonna change along with it, so.
But I think there's some value to this one. It's, it's, it's an umbrella ordinance and.
And it works and we get stuff for it. And we ha- we actually, we have actually issued violations and we made a hundred bucks. I sent him a fine for like. We negotiated. Yeah.
You have the authority under the statute today.
I do. The actual authority rests with me for the, for the fines and the waivers. Yep.
But basically now, basically giving somebody a break. If somebody accidentally doesn't know about it and does something.
Yep.
Okay, this time, but next time.
So I have a spreadsheet which tracks which all permits that come in, go onto my spreadsheet. And if, if it's, if it's a, we go after them for the permit, I have a little box that says, you know. I was nice to them. The fines were waived, but that way for another, we go back there and it's like, oh, I didn't know. Well, actually on this date, you were filed this one and we told you then. So now you get a fine. Like, so, yeah, we've, I've, I've got that part there, so.
Fool me once, shame on you. Fool me twice, shame on me.
It's definitely working much better. Things we're seeing on a steady basis, more and more permits are coming in. So obviously. The public is aware of it and the world, and that's probably a big thing is to really get that information out there.
It's an educational piece.
Yes, absolutely.
So I've started, I wrote my first article for the circle and, and that was one of the things that was ordinances like that, that's, that was what it was about. So I'm like. You know, so gotta be trying to put it out there and, and I, you know, when this, this permit, th- this form. That people fill out now, I created shortly after I started. Like it was just like. Nothing exists, so I'm just gonna read it through this and now I'll, I'll take a different approach to it now. I've revised it a few times since then, but. You know, if we want to take a, as a blank page and say, what are we really asking for? And I tried to do that with a couple, a couple of last revisions and, and doing that kind of stuff, but I, I let. I like the permits as a single page. I think it's, it's less over, it's more underwhelming to look at a one-page. Form than it is a two or three page, which it could easily become. But if it goes to pages, it, it is what it is. Uh, but it does, does specify in there that there'll be a page for the sketch plan. So that's why it's like, that's why I've got that page there that's specified on the order. So if we want to start over and say, what are we trying to do with this and go through each of the ordinances and say, does this. Does this ordinance require a permit? Yes or no? Then it goes into here somehow. And, and trying to figure it out that way. And, cause that's really what the intent of. Of, I think what the genesis of it was, was to make sure we're getting the other things done. That are necessary and like one of them's a driveway installation permit and. You, 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 you know, people get one and then they get to decide it and people put in second driveway without realizing that they can't actually do that without. Checking with the road commissioner first because there's a lot of implications for it, so.
So it sounds like you're suggesting that maybe we don't push this. Maybe we loo- we look at what you've, you've done and look for any missing components a- as we go through the ordinances.
To, yeah, I, I, you know, a- and, and we may not change a lot and if we do, like, you know, it's only, if we change it, it's gonna be for the better and. You know. I call on you, but it's not my, my place to call on you. Go ahead Dana.
I, I wanted to let people finish saying, but I, I'd like to make a motion then. Um, that the planning commission recommend through either Barbara or, uh, Bill to the select board. That we would like to respectfully remove the questionnaire from the permit tracking ordinance. Therefore, it's no longer going to be a distraction and we can get on with the work, the, the good work that has been already set up that we've. We've promulgated and that is actually working to get them to, uh, do official approval of it so that it can be. Uh, so put to rest.
We can update that permit form. At, at will. There's no, the select board does not need approval for that. They, they, all we need them to say is like, yep, we need a form. It says in there like, the, the select board says it'll be a form, there's one, we got a form. We need the select board to start the process of updating or re-adopting the ordinance. If we make any changes to the ordinance, then we need them for that. But if we just want to take the ordinance as it is and make changes to the form. That's fine. We don't, we.
I'm, I'm having trouble remembering if we made any substantive changes that we would want them to adopt, so. So I, I think that we, right now we're being distracted by.
Than the fact that to make it look like this.
Yep.
There may not have been, there may not have been a lot of changes, but.
With the fines, we just changed like the wording.
Yeah.
But yes, we did change.
The first day.
Yeah, so, so that kind of stuff.
So they do need to adopt that.
They need to do that part of it, so that starts that sixty-day clock.
Right, so what I'm doing right now is I'm still making, there's a motion on the floor. I haven't gotten a second, so we probably shouldn't have any good conversation until we have a second.
I, I heard Norm second it, that's.
Thanks, I, I missed that. Uh, so my, uh, my motion is to recommend that either Bill or Barbara, um, take. The, um, request to the select board to remove the. Uh, questionnaire from the permit tracking ordinance and for them to focus on just the language. The revised language that we have proposed in the permit tracking.
I will second that so we can discuss it.
Thank you.
I think that will help.
Okay. Okay.
So I think if, if you bring that to them on the seventh, I remember the next meeting is the seventh, not the eighth.
Yeah.
Then by, I'm guessing by the twenty-second, we could probably have that approved and start that clock.
Start the clock for the hearings and such.
Show me hearings, just publicly, just publish it. We just, we just, there's a, there's a warning I gotta put out there. It's hanging in the hallway. It's, it's all over the place.
Oh, that's right. That's right. Yep. Yep.
I, I'm somewhat confused and maybe it's just my record keeping. I don't, I have a sort of handwritten comments on the town of Rotten primary tracking ordinance. But I don't have a. A current document showing what we're taking to the select board.
Well, they, they've, they've had something. For several months.
Okay, thank you. Cause I, what I have is just handwritten notes. I remember the discussion. Et cetera, but I, I never saw something after that. For instance, I have a note about injunctive relief. But, end of my discussion. Let me see what's going on.
Any further discussion? Ready for the vote? All those in the favor, in favor of going to the select board and ask, and suggesting that the questionnaire be removed. And that they focus just on the ordinance as amended. Which they have in their possession. All those in favor? Say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Okay, unanimous. Good.
Thank you.
Um, also concerning the select board, um, a couple of meetings ago. I was there with the, um, state floodplain manager, manager for this area, for this region. And we were talking about river corridors that we brought up a few meetings ago here. So, um. The, the floodplain manager is, is really good and he did a good presentation. His name is Kyle Midash. Um, and. The upshot is that the select board voted three to two. To proceed with river corridors, the first step being reaching out to the landowners. And explaining this to, to the landowners. So if, you know, when you want to, to look at how they would affect, uh, the town, there's, there's a large map there. With river corridors, um, it's the pink and then there's some small streams affected too with that. Um, and then in the agenda, there's a, a link to. DEC's page on river quarters. We just want some background information. Kyle's got a busy schedule right now, so, um. Probably can't get him in here, uh, for a cou- couple of months probably. So that's why I'm giving you those resources. And I'm thinking, let's run this by you folks, that we might do some site surveys. For the affected landowners and maybe in the spring. Uh, when things are theoretically wet. Uh, and maybe, you know, pick three locations around the town, um, and try to get. Go to the, go to the landowners instead of like having them come here or, you know, trying to drum up support that way. And just, you know, show them, you know, maybe, you know, measure out where the river corridor would be. In the location we are, the three locations, uh, and, and just answer, answer their questions. Uh, Kyle is very good at what he does. He's, he's very proactive, so I feel very comfortable working with him in that way. And so that's, that's the thinking right now. Um, th- there is no rush. The select board's not in a rush and we all know that these things take time anyway to. Develop and, and get support behind. So.
Basically suggesting site visits to random property owners?
No, I mean, so site visits to explain, okay, this is, this is what a river corridor is. You know, this is how much in this precise spot, this is how much space it would take up. And, and why in that space it needs, it's, it's not very wide or it's very wide. And. You know, what the, the, the state has come up with some, uh, some standalone language for ordinance. For river corridors is, they came out in June with something. So it's, it's for municipalities without zoning. Um, and, you know, it, it has some restrictions and what kind of development can be done in, in a river corridor. The genesis of all this was the fact that. We're probably going to be seeing more damages from flooding, uh, because of extreme weather events. And, and the town can, uh, save money by adopting river corridors. Uh, it, it would get a higher percentage of, of disaster relief from the state if it, if we did.
And from the feds.
From the state. The state, the state gets money from the feds for a disaster declaration. And then sets up the rules and how much, you know, municipalities will get.
Um, ma- maybe we've talked about this before, but I'm drawing a blank. I'm concerned how many people, I mean, we can't visit all the land in the town.
No, no, it's, it's like running three onsite meetings instead of three, like. Come to the town office and we'll, we'll talk about this stuff so that they can see that and, um.
Say three onsite meetings, we're gonna go.
Just an idea.
Just, let me just make sure I understand you. That's all. We're gonna go to Andy and say, we'd like to have an onsite meeting at Andy's. Well, that's not a good example. Um, we, we go to some landowner who's got a thousand feet of. Creek frontage. And we're gonna have a public meeting there? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it's, it's an idea. It's an idea. It's, yeah, it's just get permission to go, say we're gonna bring a group of people.
Well, that.
And a river and a flood scientist is gonna explain or two is gonna explain things.
And that's, and the purpose of it is to get the word out.
Exactly.
Cause my, my concern is that we've got a lot of owners along stream beds, creek beds, river bridge. That probably, you know, it's been their property and then their family for two hundred years and nobody's gonna tell them what to do about it.
Oh, I think I heard that from a select board member or two.
You know, and so we need to be certain and I've, that. People are informed that, you know, this is some new regulations and this is why. And so I'm very comfortable with what you're saying. I, I, I didn't understand initially that the site visit was a public meeting. A public gathering.
Yeah, sorry.
No, maybe, I do have a hearing loss.
Yeah, a- and they're, they're optional regulations. We do not have to do this. The town does not have to do this. But the advantage is more disaster relief. The, the, the advantage is the, the, the town may not have as much cleanup to do. When there are, when there is flooding.
Well, there, it, there are two advantages, Barbara. I mean, one is that if people are watching out for things that are potential hazards, then they can avoid the hazard. The second is that if there is a hazard and it implies, it, it, and the implication is for, uh, town property. Then the amount that the town has to invest to, uh, redress that would be less by. I can't remember what the percentage is, five and a half percent, seven and a half percent or something like that. Uh, and that would, could amount to a significant amount of money. So it, it would have a benefit for the taxpayers if everybody. Pitches in to try to mitigate any, um, un- unforeseen damage as a result of following the guidelines.
And, you know, I, I keep saying this, this is municipal relief only. It's not individual.
Right.
Right. Damages to, you know, your, your property. Uh, this, this is what the town has to pay for to repair the roads or put a new bridge in. Or get the, the trees off.
But if we have to do that, then it's going to have a cost to everybody, not un- not only the landowner, but other members of the town. Cause all of that has to be raised by taxes in order to be able to pay for, what is, would, whatever portion the municipality. Is on the hook to pay. So it would cut in half, I think, what our, uh, what our obligation is, is that correct? Or a third? I can't remember what he.
Twelve and a half percent.
We're tw- we go to seventeen and a half, so.
Yeah, yeah, state goes seventeen and a half, we go to seven and a half.
Right, so it's, we, we say five, we say five per- uh, five percentage points. So it's not quite half, but it's a significant change.
Request of one of the board members to. Pull copies of.
Municipal cost.
Costs from previously federally declared disasters to see what it would have gained.
Yeah, has that been done?
Irene in sp- in specific.
Yeah, well.
That's only five percent. You keep saying half.
I'm sorry. The difference between twelve and a half and seventeen and a half.
Yeah. Five percentage points, because currently we would be paying, we're paying seventeen.
Cause the, the feds pay seventy-five.
Percent.
We pay twelve and a half, the state pay twelve, pays twelve and a half. If we adopt this, we, we gain five percent. So we, we go from paying twelve and a half, we pay seven and a half.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, that's, that's what my calculation was. From twelve and a half to seven and a half is not quite fifty percent, but i- it's a significant savings, right?
It, it can be. But I think the last time was like a little bit of like road erosion, that was it, like the one road.
For Irene?
Really?
Yeah.
In the town?
Yeah.
Well, it might be better to use an example like Brandon or something. Yeah. Um, you know, sound killing.
Yeah.
Mendon, right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, we were lucky, right? We, we were lucky.
That's not a good example.
Yeah. So let's, let's.
The Clarendon Bridge also went out, so Clarendon had to have, had to. Oh, so the state paid the whole thing? Okay.
Like we formed it and now the state highway, so it's, you know, it's just weird, but we, like the upper part of McKinley Avenue is like washed out.
Yeah, a- and Mary asked a good question about whether that, it's called the ERAF program, um, that these, these reimbursements we're talking about, whether it applies to all disaster.
Yes.
Declarations.
Question. It's not just a water event, it's like horse fire.
I think it does, but I, I, I need to check on that.
I think if it does, you will probably get more traction out of it than if it's specifically a flood event.
Yeah.
I don't.
Yeah. So that's where that stands. The map up there, there are, um, all the structures, all the E nine one one structures are indicated on that map.
The purple one up there.
Yeah, that, that one that's mostly white.
Yep.
Um, so it kind of gives you an idea how many, how many residences basically are in the, are in the river corridor or just outside the river corridor. Who, you know, might be, might be affected by inordinates of this type. And again, this is optional and this is just the first step. Just, you know, hopefully getting some buy-in from those people who would be most affected.
Thanks for the.
Some more on that in the coming months when Kyle's, uh, when Kyle's schedule frees up and after winter. So that's that one, um, the energy survey. So, um, it's now been, um, in the circle, Front Porch Forum, and I'll keep posting that on the town, uh, Facebook page. So we did get, it's up to twenty-nine responses now. Uh, we got a nice bump from that publicity. Uh, but we need more than twenty-nine responses. So talk it up. Get people to sign up for it. And I'm also wondering if we, um, wanna do something, uh, on election day. We, we've got cards.
That's Carrie. You mean like in, wow, outside? Yeah, I mean, just, just check with.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
And it's not an election thing, it's not a voting thing, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I, yeah, I think there's, I think they allow materials. They did during town meeting day.
Yeah, yeah. I just, I, I don't think there's a problem with it, just, yeah, just before we go to too much effort, it's coming up quick, so, cause.
Two weeks.
Before.
Well, the cards are ready to go. All I need is for Carrie to sign off on it. How, do we want, do we, does anybody or do we think there's any benefit to having people there handing out the cards or promoting it or answering questions?
It's certainly better, better to have someone there handing them out than just having them there to be picked up.
Right.
Yeah, there's someone there talking about it, you'll get a percent more return than they, they'll, they're.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. So we've got two polling places still. The school and here downstairs.
Probably during the peak hours, like five to seven, probably, right?
Right, but like the, the seven to nine and probably five to seven are probably the best times.
Although people have more time, the, the people that come between those times are, also the ones that are not, don't have a busy day or not missing work or.
Everybody got a ballot already, so there's some people that aren't going to be going there.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So. Just leave it open and if anyone wants to volunteer, let me know. If anyone has some time to spend on, on that day at either location. Let me know.
I'll give it a try, I'll let you know.
Okay. Okay. At the school or no, you, you're.
Doesn't matter. I'm, I won't be at any place.
Okay, thanks, Sherman.
I might be able to help Barbara, uh, but it would have to be five to seven in the evening. I'll be traveling back during the day from DC, so I won't get until between one and three in the afternoon.
Okay.
So.
You driving?
No.
Okay.
Well, I'm driving from Lebanon to here, but, uh, I'm not driving from DC.
I gave up doing that forty-five years ago. I did it about three times.
Yeah, I haven't done it very much. Usually if I'm going there, I take an alternate means of.
Probably gonna be a real low turnout because of.
Because of the.
Of all the ballots. Everybody's got their ballots and I know that they've been getting a lot of ballots already, you know, returned to the office here. It's gonna be, gonna be interesting, but there's gonna be a lot of people that aren't gonna, you don't have to be here.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, I know. It's, it's, it's not like the elections of old.
Right.
Anymore.
Well, that's just for this, like, the next, in March, it'll be back to the normal.
Local elections, right, for the, yeah.
Well, any other ideas for getting the word out? We're missing any media or anything?
Uh, if you, if you were looking to target a population, I would have somebody go to the school uh, around, uh, pick up and drop off time.
Oh, there's also a school newsletter that has anywhere between five and ten attachments to it, that some of them are community related.
Attach it to the digital newsletter?
Right.
Look, Pam Muck.
Yeah.
Hmm?
Look, Pam Muck.
Pam Muck.
Muck, M O C K. Yeah, if you give it to her, she'll put it in.
I've asked her before. And they're kind of particular about what.
Maybe send Mary Beth.
Well, it's nothing new. It's in the what the paper we just got, the.
Circle, yeah.
Circle, yeah, it's in the circle, so it's not like there's something that's not being.
Right, but the, the, the population of the, uh, of the school is more likely to read the school newsletter than it is to read the circle.
Now, my, 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 my comment meant that it's not, nothing new we're asking them to do.
Oh, yes, 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 right.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, if you come up with any other ideas, please let me know. And, you know, we'll keep the survey open probably through the month. In hopes of getting a wider response. Okay, let's move to the budget. It sounds like it's gonna take up a lot of time, but it really should. Um, Bill, we're gonna flip that up on them?
We really have, oh, we've really spent nothing on legal services or we haven't been billed for legal services?
I don't know where the bills have been going to.
Cause I don't, I don't believe that that, that, that can be right based on the number of times that we've asked for a consult with our, uh, attorney, so.
We, we, they changed their billing system, so we got a bill with the previous balance and the current balance, we didn't get the previous itemization, so probably part of that.
We owe more than, I mean, we are oblo- obligated to pay more than zero, is all I'm saying.
When is that, I, when, how is that done? The itemization?
Uh, it's a fifteen minute by fifteen minute accounting at this time.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah. What I'm asking, okay, we've, we've been.
But it's not gonna, he doesn't, it says like, this date, this time, did this for this group. That like it's, so we gotta go through it line by line to pull out what goes where and.
Oh, my goodness. So how does he can re- how does he reconcile that, I wonder?
I don't think he does. I think he sends his time to his secretary, secretary sends it to the county department and we get a bill. So.
Yeah, but we've got, um, you know, you look at the, the first line up there, two sixty-one, thirty-five, two sixty-one, that would be legal advice, two sixty-five. Um, could also, under the zoning part of that, uh, we could also squeeze in advice on some of our ordinances there. Uh, the advertising part of that is what we need, what we use to put warnings in the paper and, and, and such, and that's.
I would leave that.
Yeah, and so the push this, this fiscal, this coming fiscal year from the select board is to at least level fund uh, your budget. And that's every department head has, has been given that instruction except for police and fire. So, and, and then the two sixty-two, the regional commission, um, part of that is probably the annual fee, about half of that is about the annual annual fee to be part of the Rutland Regional Planning Commission.
You mean what's been paid out of the one thousand fourteen? Is part of that or no?
Yeah. Yeah, and I'm not sure where the rest of it came, what the rest of it is. Um, Jim is the rep, but uh, I'm not sure he's attended any meetings in this fiscal year, so I'm not quite sure, but these are the numbers that Carrie is going by.
Yeah, so the twenty, so, so this is so this is the current fiscal year, so legal services will absolutely not have anything in it because the last time we got an itemized bill was April. And we just got one the other day. So there would, we never got one to put anything down for it. So that's why it's zero.
Right, but we really, we've only only gone through one quarter.
Right, yeah.
Of the fiscal year.
Exactly, yeah.
So if you take.
Calendar year or June, one, July thirty?
July one to June thirty.
July one to, excuse me. Ask a little question.
Yeah.
Why, where does this form come from? And why does it have zoning on it?
And why?
But it's, it's only in two places. And is this something we designed or was?
That's what's in the budget. This is straight off the budget sheets, it's in the town report.
Yeah, it's just something doesn't get changed, never gets changed, so.
They never have zoning here.
If they talked about it.
But really, it, it's the first word in, in that one, this advertising, and then the, the next one is consulting fees, consultant fees. Uh.
I could quietly change it and see.
It doesn't really matter. You just need to know that you're using those lines for various, I mean, it's more important that there's a code that goes along with it and you have the money to, to, uh, address that particular code. That's
Yeah.
What it's called is almost irrelevant.
But, you know, the zoning comes in handy once in a while, like, you know, if we exceed the first legal services.
Yep.
Then I can argue that we've been talking about ordinances or something. So.
Because we don't have zoning, anything that's ordinance related would fall into that category.
And is there, is there a concern that we fall, that we not exceed each line item or, or is it just the total? Uh, and, and there was the first column there, the two, 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 four, five hundred, two thousand, five hundred. If, if all of that money ended up in, under legal services, is that okay?
No.
No.
Not.
So if well, the, the second, the, the.
I don't think you'd get paid, number one.
The third line is, is your, is your, is your payroll. That's your, your compensation line.
The one that, oh, just the plant, not the regional commission of the plant.
Four thousand dollars is your compensation line, but the other thing, so you have six, seven thousand dollars. If you spend seven thousand dollars on legal services, you can't take a legal service and bill it to zoning or consulting fees. You have to bill it to legal services. So legal services might be seven thousand dollars in the hole, but your budget is flat.
That my, my only question is the budget, the final, the final total. As long as that total comes within, whatever the total is there, we're okay.
It doesn't make, it doesn't make the auditors happy, but yes, it's, it's, yeah.
Yeah.
The goal is to accurately budget and not try to move funds. We can move funds. There's not, there's no issue with doing it. It's, there's, it's all transparent. It's just the, it's, it's the planning and spending process.
Understand. Dana?
Thank you.
Yep.
There are two issues. One is budgeting and the other is auditing. So, uh, the, the budget is to help uh, understand the areas where we expect to spend money. That's just for planning purposes. The auditors wanna see that things are being coded properly so that you can avoid fraud. So for example, you can't just have, you can't, you can't have five lines or ten lines and have everything allocated to one line. That's a no-no in gap, um, uh, federal guidelines for auditing purposes. And they would tell us that there was an error that we would need to correct.
Right.
And if it wasn't corrected, then the select board should take appropriate steps to address that through the financial officer of the, which I believe is the clerk treasurer.
And your, yours is a, a little simpler than, than certainly the rest of them are.
Yeah, this one's so simple.
Yeah, so other type of ways like putting ten thousand dollars in legal services and spending five hundred dollars. We don't wanna do that either.
Right.
Cause that's, you're adding way more than you actually need. So, you know, it's, it, but it's tough to say in the next three weeks, we need to come up with numbers that are going to apply July of twenty-three through June of twenty-four.
We're, yeah.
Same thing happens in schools.
It is conceivable. It's some year we would have four thousand dollars in legal services.
Absolutely.
Not that it happens every year, but it happens once. As, as.
It, you know, that's a pretty, has a pretty low impact, but
Yeah.
it, there, there's a process for if that happens. I mean, if, 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 if the general budget goes deficit, there's, there's a process. It doesn't, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna come back either way. But it's just knowing upfront what it is, is, is better than, than.
Right, but if you know that you have legal services, you're gonna have to do consulting with your legal services team, then you, what you do is you take, um, either out of, uh, the, the zoning on thirty, fifty, fifty-three, two sixty-five, or you take it out of consulting fees. And then you, you leave that amount there, you overexpend the legal services by whatever it is, but then that line down below won't get touched. And then you're, you're offsetting the cost in one area and you say, well, we're not gonna do any other consulting this year because we need that money for legal services.
So you can do that. And, and, yeah, you don't, you don't wanna like code it as consulting when it's really a legal service. You just, you code it what it is and we do better next time.
Yeah, my, my question was, was directed as whoever looks at this to see what money we spent and what they care about.
Carrie and the auditors. That's, that's, that's what it comes down to.
All right.
And I mean, we should care too, but.
The auditors can deal with what they need.
So the reality is that we rarely expend any of these line items.
Yeah.
Fully.
Fully.
Yeah.
So, um, what do we want to go back to the select board with? Looking at the pace of spending so far.
I'm gonna make one observation.
Mm-hmm.
If the amount that is spent on planning commission salaries alone holds, we'll be spending fifty-eight hundred by the end of this year. And so I'm assuming that from year to year, you're gonna be spending approximately the same amount. So, because that's only one quarter recorded there through September is my guess. You still have three other quarters, so you multiply that by, yeah, you multiply that by four quarters and you'll be at fifty-eight hundred. Fifty, actually, uh, it's almost at six thousand dollars. So that would be over expended. If the other lines are under expended.
Never over expended that before. I don't know why that's.
But not every, I mean, I don't get, I certainly don't. But not every, I mean, I don't get, I certainly don't.
The last full year was in twenty-six hundred dollars.
Yeah, we.
Compensation requested.
I, I'm just saying that if you've got one quarter and you've spent almost fifteen hundred dollars, then in four quarters, that would be six thousand.
So, but that goes.
So you sign those bill, what's going on with the fifteen hundred?
I don't sign those. No, they don't carry, I don't. Sheets or payroll at all, that's.
Yep.
Um, so the other part of the budgeting thing is, you look at kinda history, so the last year was twenty-five hundred dollars, we put in four thousand. So this year, if more people put in for compensation than the, the other years, then it's gonna throw it off.
Yeah, the, the, we should not drop it.
I, I don't disagree.
No, I was just making an observation about the only data point that we really have up there. And that is, it, well, and we have two data points, really, we have, well, three.
Last year.
But we have the regional commission and we have a thousand. Oh, sorry? Yeah, but it doesn't get us, it doesn't allow us to multiply and get anything. So it is a data point, I stand corrected, but the regional commission, if we were to, if we were to annualize that over the four quarters, would be at four thousand there.
That, that's.
The planning commission would be.
Explain that one, Dana.
I, I, I understand that, I'm just telling you that from a mathematical perspective, if you're going to calculate. Uh, you could potentially spend four thousand if it held as a, as a trend.
It's not, it's not, so just take that one out of.
No, I'm not taking it out because I'm still trying to make my point, my point is you can't multiply zero and get anything. You have three numbers up there, if you take the regional planning commission and multiply it by four quarters, you get four thousand dollars. If you take the planning commission, the local planning commission and take fifteen hundred and multiply it, you get six thousand dollars.
Okay, that, that's.
If you take, can, let me finish, Barbara, please, if you take miscellaneous and multiply that by four quarters, you get almost five hundred dollars. So if you take all of those, you get ten thousand five hundred dollars for this year. Even though nothing else is changing, so there's gonna be all kinds of things, but what you do is you take a mathematical model and you, and you look at it. So is ten thousand five hundred dollars realistic, maybe, and you've got eleven thousand dollars in the budget.
Dana, two sixty-two includes almost all of that as a one-time only annual fee.
I, I, I understand that, I got it, I, I, it's not.
So it's not going to be five thousand dollars, it's just not.
So we're not gonna do any more consulting with the regional complaint, regional planning commission.
No, no, we don't pay the, we pay them a due, uh, dues once a year.
I, I understand that, and we also did some consulting that we had grant money for.
But we don't, we don't pay them for that, we, that's separate, that would, that would come from a different, that would come from something different anyway.
So, so something different out of our budget or no?
That would.
That's not the planning commission.
Consulting for like the pocket parks, something like that would come from professional services.
Not ours.
Right.
That line item is the annual dues.
Yeah.
And the representative attending meetings.
Yeah.
Much like the planning commission is.
Right.
These members attending meetings.
So you have three quarters of, 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 of a cost going into.
Andre's come down for the stormwater ordinance.
Yep.
He got paid from consulting fees.
Ours.
Yes.
Okay, so my point's.
Your meeting for you.
My, my point is that, well, I don't really care whether it's coming out of thirty-five, two sixty-seven.
Yeah.
Or thirty-five, two sixty-two, the only number that you can do a modeling on is something other than zero.
Right.
And so my, maybe that five hundred dollars is completely spent, maybe that five hundred dollars becomes twelve hundred dollars.
Okay, okay, Dana, okay, okay, Dana, what did we spend last year, Bill?
Um, and I, 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 I fixed the, I fixed the la- line labels last year, they, they didn't make it over to your copy, but I fixed them last year, so they don't say that anymore.
Um, it's nowhere near eleven thousand.
No, planning commission legal, so this is, this is. Twenty-two, this, because the town report has the last full year's numbers, we don't have them yet for the next one, but twenty-twenty, or this, actually.
It's two years ago, it's twenty-twenty. Because that, that town report went in, in January and it recorded what was through twenty.
The, 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 okay, the bottom line is we never, we never spend our budget out.
Yeah.
We never. And, and this even includes more for legal services, it was, I think, a thousand prior to this.
Planning commission legal is what this is now called, legal services, two sixty-one, we spent nothing.
How is that possible?
Well, two sixty-two, spent a thousand fourteen dollars, yeah, this is, yeah, so this is, this is what it is.
Whoa, 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 what are you reading from?
The, the bud, the draft budget sheets, my, my draft budget sheets.
This is based on?
This is twenty, that's the, the same number, yeah, this is twenty, twenty-one to twenty-twenty-two spending.
Okay.
This is, it's not. The budget is.
That's current expenses.
Yeah.
Last year's.
Regional commission, thousand fourteen dollars, salary fourteen ninety-three, so this must be where I came from, yeah, because it was Kerry had. So planning commission salary fourteen ninety-three, miscellaneous, hundred and fourteen dollars.
Time out, Bill. But, Bill, I, I'm gonna make my second point of observation, I mean, this is what I've done for the last twenty-five years, so. I, I mean, if you've got a comment to be, please, give me a little bit of credibility for having done budgeting for twenty-five years. Because I know what I'm talking about, so, uh, those numbers up there are not twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three current numbers. Those are numbers that were reported at the end of twenty-twenty-two, fiscal year twenty-twenty-two.
Ending July thirty-one, twenty-twenty-two.
Oh, she didn't give me what I asked for.
That's right.
I asked her for.
July thirty-one or June thirty?
June thirtieth.
June thirtieth.
So, yeah, so this is, this is for, this is for a year's worth expenses.
Okay, so I asked for what our expenses have been in this fiscal year. But we got, what we got were what we spent last fiscal year.
Yes.
Okay, which might even be more helpful, I guess.
But we never did a mailing last year, all last year, we never just did one mailing that cost us a penny.
We didn't do a mailing last year.
So, no, but we, the last big one we did was the stormwater one, and we did that through a service in Killington. And that came out of, that came out, I think, miscellaneous, but most letters that get sent out. Like we buy envelopes that are posted prepaid, like, there's, it, it just, it's more cumbersome than anything to go back and say. Oh, I got five letters, I'm gonna, it just, it's, the, 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 the work to do that is just not worth. Because, you know, it, it, you know, for things like that, it's still, even though you have your budget, you're part of the general budget.
I understood.
The transfer station, constables are all part of the general budget, so. There comes a point when it's like, a hundred dollars here, a hundred dollars there, if we move it from. Our town, our, our postage line for the, for the office to you, it doesn't matter, it's the same general budget, it, it doesn't. The, the work to move it around doesn't.
Okay.
Gain us anything.
Norm.
If I understand correctly, these are numbers, uh, so June thirty-two. And have nothing to do with the current.
With the fiscal year run right now. Yes.
None of that money in the right-hand column. None of it reflects the expenditures from July one to date.
Correct.
All right, so we don't know what we've done.
I know, and that's what I asked for.
Correct.
Um, but, okay.
So can we get it for next meeting or we have to vote on the budget tonight?
But, I, I, I think we should come up with something tonight for this, for the select board, now just, everyone, just look at this. We spent last year, be, even though this is one, not what we expected, we spent twenty-six hundred dollars. More or less, in all of whatever the, the fiscal year this represents up there. Our, we have budgeted, we have, we have in the budget, eleven thousand dollars. So. Do, why don't we just say we're gonna level fund this?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm so moved.
And I don't think we're going to go over. If we do, we're, you know, something horrible is happening, Norm.
That was my point ten minutes ago, when I made the calculation, uh, based on those numbers which were wrong. That we had, uh, eleven thousand dollars available. And we would be expending possibly, if you did, if you did the modeling, if I did the modeling.
Wearing it out.
Ten thousand five hundred, I know I'm wearing it out, but my point is that we could have been here. Uh, to level funding the budget ten minutes ago, if I hadn't been. Called out on, uh, doing calculations that were irrelevant, but. It turns out that the calculations were based on numbers that are not actuals.
Right.
Given that situation, I think you ought to make the motion.
I'm not making any motion.
Somebody make it.
I will make a point, though, that, um. The fact that we are paying nothing for legal services is an auditing aberration. As someone who's gone through multiple audits over the course of twenty-five years.
He's explained why, though.
I, I, I know what he's explained, but the, the point is that. We can be contributing to the general fund budget and that's fine, I don't have any issues with that. But if there's work that's being done for the planning commission and having sat in the chair of the person, the executive director looking over those. The auditors would be saying, you should be billing, uh, some of the things to legal services for the planning commission if they're doing a review of planning commission.
Okay, thank you, Dana.
You're welcome.
I, I get what you're saying.
And, and I move that we, uh, we, we level fund, we, we agree to level fund for next year.
And go with the first column.
Yes, that's the best we can come up with now, yeah.
Our second thought.
Second, Norm, okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, unanimous, get rid of that bill, please.
You shouldn't, you shouldn't shove that anymore, Bill.
All right, announcements, thank you very much for the nice card. That you will sign.
You're welcome.
Very thoughtful. Mary Beth, congratulations, the Act two fifty permit was approved for the Northwood Bike Path.
That's great.
Wow. It's like a week or two ago, yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
I didn't hear that, that's nice.
That's excellent.
The only thing they had to change was, um. We had a stream crossing and there was part of the trail that was within the fifty-foot buffer. And, um, so we moved it a little bit out.
Fifty-foot buffer being what?
Of a, around the stream.
Stream, yeah.
Um, so they're fine with the stream crossing, we have a bridge.
Yeah.
Covering the actual crossing, but, um, part of the trail, just because the topography was, um. Basically parallel to the stream, so they had us move it.
Yeah.
More perpendicular to the stream to avoid, or the, there's a loop, but we had extended the trail out further. And then the loop went out further, so there was less stream impacts.
That's good.
And that was.
It is good, but excellent, uh, lots of hard work.
Right, there's a lot of going into it, but, once we actually submitted all the permits, we had worked everything out before then. And then, then it went relatively smoothly, and we also, um, met with, um. So Andy McMillan, who worked with Mike and I, Mike Rowe and I in the permitting. Um, and I met with, um, Rosie at KSA Bill, he's the. Um, person the town hired to do the work.
To do the work.
And who designed the trails and, um, met with him to go over all the permits and everything that's required. And talk over his plans for how to get the trail built and that went really well on Tuesday.
So, so the next steps would be?
Um, so over this winter, once the leaves have fallen, it's a little easier to see, he's going to mark the trail. Um, the actual location on the ground and we'll answer any questions that he has and then, um. Probably start construction in the spring, so we're a little behind, behind schedule because of the permitting, but.
And refresh my memory, is it funded?
It is funded, it was funded for this year, but it was held up by the.
It was in the budget for this year.
Yes.
It's coming from capital improvement, so it's not affected by the budget cycle.
Oh.
Awesome. And Mike handled the budgets, we just took care of permitting. Right, and so just to remind everyone, so this wasn't a.
Just the permitting.
Right, we won't get into, yeah. Everything that went into it, but it's done.
It is.
What's the next step?
So, um, once it's flagged, just construction, so hopefully by mid-delee. Um, summer next year we'll have.
It'll be open.
Bikes, people riding on the.
All right.
Yeah, we're gonna need, so. Um, the one thing that the trail builder is not doing is the boardwalks down at the base of the hill. Um, so, we're gonna have to figure out, you know, volunteers and materials and, but there. Um, some people have already offered materials and assistance with that.
Is it wet there?
Yeah, so because the trail, it's part of what held it up just to make everything work. Because it's so steep where they put, so part of the plan was that there's a two-mile loop, but we wanted it. We didn't want trail crossings to minimize bike, hike interactions. Um, so it's within this loop, but part of it is going through the really steep area. So to make everything work with the grade, we, um, are going down to the base of the hill. And then boardwalks along the base and then it goes back up the hill.
How far is it?
Um, I don't remember the mileage, but I could send it to you, I don't remember offhand.
Does it connect with other bike trails y- yet?
Oh, man, that's another whole.
Okay, let's not.
Yeah. Hopefully I'll be updating you soon, but that.
You bring us some laugh.
Yeah.
Right, it's kind of hit a roadblock.
Yeah.
Where, where's it go from to?
Uh, right now, it's all gonna be within the existing trail loop. Um, so, right, yep, inside, and then it'll, um. May connect up with the shared use path, but, um, yeah. But it's designed that you can do this whole loop without going on the existing main trail loop.
Excellent, excellent.
Yeah.
Good work.
Thank you.
Bill, the new wifi, does that affect anyone in this room besides you?
Yeah.
Um, so what are, what are your recommendations on that? Uh, is it mostly for staff?
It, it does, ye- yes and no. Uh, we have, we have. Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm almost done with it, but we have put in, uh, fiber internet at every town building. Uh, and I'm almost done putting up wireless access points at all the buildings, so that we wifi. At all the buildings, there's a public one and an internal one, public one you connect to. Without any passwords, check a box and connect to it and it resets every day, the internal one just requires a password. Get really nice to be good password, so. But what the advantage of that is, is no matter what building you go to, you just connect to it, so. Fire sta- both fire stations, town hall, Dewey Field, uh, pool, the, the ball field building, the highway garage, all have transmitters in them now, so.
Oh, okay.
So if you started here and you're on the network and you go up to the pool, it's still, it will pick up your, um. Uh, it will transfer over your credentials, you know, if you're on the, um.
Either one.
The closed network, oh, okay.
The, the public one, just, I have it kick people off every day, so you just reset every day, that way it just doesn't keep. Okay, we're getting to it, but what's nice is that actually, a big, big part of it is for the pool, because we've never had, we've never had a public one there before. Never had an option there before, but we've got a good deal consolidated and they, they've been running it for us and. Uh, Monday, that'll, the install will be done at the pool on Monday, that's the last, the last part of it, so.
Yeah, okay, so you really don't need any, I mean, we're really not involved. Need to change anything.
You wanna, you wanna be on the internal one to stay, to stay connected, come see me, but if you need one, public wifi, just. To public wifi and there you go.
I'll, I'll behave.
Okay, great.
What are you paying per month?
Oh, uh. We have different, different services, different buildings, this, this building's got a faster service than the other ones do, so it just depends upon where you are, but we have a. Two hundred and fifty gig connection at every building except this, this is a one-gig connection here, so it's a. Much faster connection, but it works, it's, it's, we, we used to have Comcast and this is light years faster.
And are you paying a comparable fee or?
We added, uh. Added two buildings to our service and we're paying the same rate a year than we were before. So, we have a three-year contract with them, so.
Fun, okay, thank you.
I have to tell you, uh, that, I took it, yeah.
Go on.
No, there's a, my, something that happened with me was consolidated when they, when they went through all the neighborhoods and they did the.
Fiber optics.
And they, they did some damage to my driveway and they came back and fixed it.
Good.
They told me that it, I'll fix it, I didn't believe them and they came back with about three months later and really, and repaired it, which is. Which was really good.
They were pretty good about going, circling back.
They were very good about it, yeah.
There were, there were some issues and they, it sounds like they've addressed every one of them, so.
Yeah.
I wonder if they'll address not going to a home. At this point, but that's neither here nor there. Um, okay, I'd like to um. Refer to the letter that came from Barnard and Gervais or Gervais. Um about the Holly Lane subdivision. There's a letter that came to us. Did we respond to that at all? Um I'm wondering if we should, because they, at least the designer. Or surveyor, whoever this uh is, is under the impression they've had a a public, a planning commission hearing. We've had, to my recollection, we 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 had a phone call.
Yeah, we just had like an introductory meeting and.
Or not a phone call, but a Zoom call with with someone representing the developers.
I think they submitted application, but I don't think they even submitted a, well, they did. I I it's been a while, I I'll see what I have.
I don't think we even have a preliminary plot, do we?
I don't think.
Yeah. So so I I I think I will respond, just just clarify a few things, if that's okay with everyone.
Just like what's required, you know, that we will need to have a warrant, right?
Yeah.
This is a letter from.
There's some misunderstanding about that there has, already has been one.
Yeah, it was, it was, we, yeah, we came, we went over it last meeting.
From Barnard and.
Sitting there waiting for the state permits.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So my understanding was that the ball was in their court and we were just to wait and hear back from them, so I didn't know that there was any response that was needed. It was just an update as far as what I understood.
Yes, yes, it it, that's how they wrote it as an update. But I just want to clarify with them that they have not had any hearings. If they're looking at our subdivision regulations. And thinking they already have one of the two hearings already done, then just want to correct that in their minds.
But was that, that, excuse me for one second, that wasn't at all indicated in the letter, was it?
Yeah, I just read it. Um, we attended the sketch plan hearing on April twenty, well, I didn't read all of this. We attended the sketch plan hearing on April twenty first, twenty twenty two. And are waiting to have all necessary permits in hand before scheduling our next planning commission hearing.
Okay, so you're just clarifying that that wasn't a hearing. On the twenty first.
Right, and and what sketch plan they're referring to.
Yeah.
So, yeah, Norm.
Are you gonna send that letter out for the commission?
Yeah, I think so. Probably have some questions for Bill, but. Yeah, if if that's okay.
No, I think you, I think you should, and I think you should do it.
Thanks.
Politely, and you might, I don't know whether you want to send it by email and regular mail.
Yeah, I know. I mean, this was September twenty ninth when we got this in, so it's it's been a month already.
At the last meeting, we were under the impression that we didn't have to do anything, so we did not respond.
Okay, right, that's what I thought, okay.
No, I'm not suggesting you shouldn't do it. I just get it out as fast as you can.
Exactly, exactly.
But if I suggested otherwise, I didn't mean it.
No. Okay, the minutes from October sixth.
Move to approve.
Unless there's other announcements or news, I'm sorry. Okay, uh motion to approve.
Approve, yep.
There a second?
A second.
Okay, okay, someone else is awake still. Um, yeah.
I reviewed them all. I saw no changes needed.
I I saw no typos or substantive uh omissions. I just wondered whether we ought to be specific and indicate Mr. Peterson presided.
Isn't that in the roster at the top?
Vice chair?
Yeah, there was no chair, so I.
Okay, so I I just wondered if we needed to say it, that's all.
Well, it's also got his signature line at the bottom of the.
Right.
At the end of it, so.
I didn't sign it yet. I was waiting to make sure.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I did not.
I I got it covered, Norm. Yeah, that one.
Norm, is that the best you have?
That's all I got.
Good.
We we just ran a very tidy meeting, or Dana did.
We barely had a quorum.
Yeah, but we milked it for all it was worth.
Poor people, yeah, it's just.
We were fishing on our discussions, though, I can tell you.
Okay, all those in favor of the minutes? Approving the minutes, thank you, Norm. Say aye.
Aye.
I'm abstaining, I wasn't here.
I'll abstain as well.
So who was, who was here? Jerry was here and Jerry.
All, it's only you three can vote on it.
That's right.
Uh. Yes, I think we need four votes.
You need a quorum of the per- those present.
Yeah.
Huh?
Yeah, I I could, it is majority of people that were in attendance.
And we do have a quorum of those who are in attendance. We had four and we're having three who are voting, so.
Actually, it's, doesn't work that way. No, to to.
You can't have it, well, I mean, you'd have to have everybody present to be able to vote then.
To. Vote something in the affirmative to pass something, you have to have a quorum of the full body. So in our case, you had to have four affirmative votes. I don't know if that applies to minutes.
Are we following Robert's rules of order or not? Are we following?
This is, this is a court ruling in Vermont. Okay.
Let's just wait till next time with four of us.
Okay, okay.
Well, you have to make sure that the four people who are present.
Yes.
Otherwise, you'll be bumping it out further. This doesn't make sense to me.
We have to wait to juries. Jerry, you, me and Howard are all here at the same time.
It's been done before, yeah.
So I withdraw my motion. Somebody withdraw the second.
You didn't have a motion.
Oh, I have the second.
No, the motion needs to be tabled, so someone needs to make a motion to table the minutes.
Move to table.
Second.
All those in favor? Say aye.
Alright.
Aye, opposed. Okay. Hopefully, we'll get to that next meeting. Anything else? Okay, thank you, everyone. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I have moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you.